I'd like to welcome you to this candidate forum on behalf of the organizing committee, which is Gary Conradius, Christine Hingey, Alan Mohawk, myself, and best still, who are joining us this evening. I'd like to remind you, if you have a question, we will be inviting audience questions. The second half of the program will be devoted to audience questions, so if you have an audience question, please make sure you get a 3x5 or 4x6 card, I'm not quite sure what size they are, and make sure you drop it in the basket, because this will be your last chance to submit a question. We will be having a look at them once the program starts. Just to clarify, as a 501(c)(3) tax-exempt organization, SOCAN cannot endorse candidates. We provide this forum in service of our educational mission, to provide voters with information on the candidates. I would like to note that all candidates for Congressional District 2 and Jackson County Commissioners, all candidates who have filed, were invited to participate in this forum, despite repeated contact attempts, some declined or failed to respond. And so we have the candidates that you see before you, and we'll hear from shortly. Candidate literature is available on the tables to your right, over there, my left, and if you would like to visit the tables after that forum, you're welcome to do so. We do have some voter registration forms on the back table, if you are interested in voting, if you haven't registered, you still have time. The deadline is October the 18th, and ballots will be mailed out from October the 19th through the 21st. I do have to note that this event is not sponsored, not endorsed by the Medford Public Library, they require that we say that. I'd like to start by introducing our moderator from Providence Hospital, Liz Olson, who will introduce you to the rules of the game.
Thank you, Alan. Once again, welcome to the SOCAN Congressional District 2 and Jackson County Commissioners' All-Party Candidate Forum on Climate and the Environment. We'll start by offering some guidelines for tonight. Everyone, would you please silence or turn off your cellphones? And then, audience members, would you please avoid applause, any applause, or any vocal expressions until the end of the question period, so that we can maximize the time for the candidates. So tonight, we're going to have four opportunities for the candidates to address the questions and issues. First, the candidates will each have two minutes for their introductory remarks. Then, they will have 90 seconds to respond to each of the questions that have been prepared by the SOCAN team. Next, the candidates will respond to the questions from you, the audience. They will have one minute each to answer those. And lastly, the candidates will have two minutes for their closing remarks. Afterwards, there will be an opportunity to meet and greet the candidates for the last half hour, and Alan will explain later how that will work. Candidates, we will have a firm one-and-a-half hour schedule tonight for our questions, and so we ask you to please keep the time limit allowed for each question. To assist us in keeping our time on schedule, we have our timekeeper, Kayla Moriello, who will hold up a sign for you when there are 30 seconds, and when it is time for you to stop, whereupon I might also have to inform you to stop. We will always be starting with the Congressional District 2 candidate, and the Commissioner candidates will alternate first and second slots. And candidates, if you would ever like a question repeated before you reply, please go ahead and ask me to do so. So now, allow me to introduce our candidates. After I've introduced them all, you may express applause to thank them for offering to serve our communities and state. Mr. Joe Yeder, Democratic nominee for the 2nd Congressional District. Ms. Denise Kraus, Democratic nominee for Position 1, Jackson County Commissioner. Mr. Al Densmore, Democratic nominee for Position 3, Jackson County Commissioner.
Independent Party Boarder.
Thank you. Mr. Al Densmore, Independent Party for Oregon.
Of Oregon.
Of Oregon, for Position 3, Jackson County Commissioner. Our apologies, thank you. Candidates, you will now have two minutes each for introductory remarks. We will start with Mr. Yeder, then Ms. Kraus, then Ms. Kate Densmore.
It sounds like I'm live. Hi, I'm Joe Yeder, I want to be your Congressional Representative in Washington DC, right here from Oregon's 2nd Congressional District. I got into this race to defend democracy and freedom. I am a veteran, a physician, a retired teacher, farmer, and I was in a comfortable retirement on January 6th of this year, and I saw my opponent, Cliff Benz, 72 hours after pledging to defend the Constitution, go ahead and vote to disenfranchise millions of Americans. I decided then and there that I had to run, so I'm doing it. I also want to defend freedom. What I saw on June 24th of this year shows that freedom is under attack. Autonomy has been overturned by the Supreme Court. I'm here tonight to defend the freedom of all of us to live in a green, sustainable future that is welcoming to our children. The freedom for all of us to breathe clean air, drink clean water, and enjoy an environment where we can, all of us, living organisms, humans and non-human alike, can thrive into the future, and that's why I'm here tonight. I recognize the climate crisis, I recognize the reality of it, my opponent opposes me on that, he is a climate change denier, who wants to expand the use of fossil fuels, I adamantly oppose to that, and that's why I'm here tonight to talk with you. Thank you.
I'm Denise Kraus, running for Jackson County Commissioner. In the 1970s, I was a kid, and I remember when I first learned that the bees were in trouble. I was horrified, and I was terrified, and I had no balance, and I thought, oh my God, the adults really need to take care of this. Well, here we are now, about 50 years later, and here we are, so you know that not enough happened. Well, during that time, I went and I got a, I had a career in healthcare for 25 years, and during that 25 years, I got a PhD in preventive medicine, and that's because I really like to focus on prevention, like let's prevent a problem before it becomes a crisis. So also during that, during that career, I was a professor, I was a healthcare researcher, a scientist, and an administrator. Outside of work, I served over two decades on the Executive Committee of the Sierra Club, because I was an environmental and social activist. I retired in 2017 and moved into my small farm, and that's when I realized that farmers are really on the front lines of climate change. My dad was always really concerned about weather, and you know, we always wanted to talk about the weather, and I thought that was kind of funny, but now, he had grown up on a farm with depression, and now I really, I get it, I really get it. So I am running for Jackson County Commissioner, because I want to be a Commissioner who is a very strong advocate of climate science, and also I will work very hard to push forward climate-friendly objectives for Jackson County.
Thank you. I'm Al Densmore, and 52 years ago, I began a career in public life, most of it as an unpaid public official, not a paid public official, and it's funny to be running for a full-time paid job, actually. I started in politics and was honored by the citizens of Jackson County to elect me to the Oregon Legislature early 1970s, where we worked very hard on things like the Bottle Bill, the Bicycle Bill, the first funding for the Rogue Valley Transportation District, land use planning, I served a term at the request of Governor Strohman, the Oregon Environmental Council, Environmental Quality Commission. And at that time, was a time when we as, in those days, 97% of the people were either Democrats or Republicans. That isn't the case today. We were collaborative, both parties worked together on common sense solutions. That's why I'm running as an independent. I believe we can work again towards solving these problems, because they really aren't red or blue problems, the problems of the environment and the climate aren't, and shouldn't be. So that's what I'm about, is trying to seek those common sense, common ground solutions for us. Thank you.
All right, we're going to move on to our prepared questions now. These have been, again, prepared by the SOCAN team, and they were shared with the candidates two weeks ago. And I'll remind, candidates, we're going to limit you to 90 seconds for each question here, for seven prepared questions. Our first question on the topic of the climate crisis will be for our Congressional District 2 candidate, Mr. Yeder. We know that the greatest existential threat facing humanity, and indeed, like as we know it on the planet, is the climate crisis induced by human use of fossil fuels, coal, oil, and gas. What proposals would you introduce, support, or oppose to address this nation's contribution to the problem?
Thank you. I think my mic is solid. It's off. Okay, ah, now I'm hearing, okay. So yeah, the climate crisis is real. Recognizing that is kind of like recognizing gravity, and recognizing it now is like recognizing gravity when you're passing the 40th floor on your way down, it is time to pull the ripcord. My opponent denies gravity, he's not willing to pull the ripcord, in fact, he would like the acceleration of gravity to be faster than 9.8 meters per second per second. So I would support, in Congress, every measure possible to do everything that we can as soon as we can. I support all the components of the proposed Build Back Better ideas that had been piecemealed up, of the whole panoply of things that are the Green New Deal. I support the Infrastructure Act, I support the IRA, the, oh my God, Inflation Reduction Act, we have to do everything all at once. We have the technology right now to do it, to decarbonize, to electrify, and to build transmission lines and storage facilities, we have that technology, all we are lacking is the political will. In Congress, I will provide that will 24/7. Thank you.
The first climate question for the Commissioner candidates, we'll start with Ms. Kraus. What, if anything, do you think the Jackson County Board of Commissioners should do to promote county-wide recognition of and response to the urgent climate crisis? And in your answer, please explain why you think that.
So we're all affected by climate change, and the Yale Program on Climate Change Communication did a survey recently, and they found out that the majority of residents in Jackson County are worried about global warming. I believe the county commissioners should be actively engaged in climate change issues, and one of the most effective ways I see that we can do that is to work with the Rogue Valley Council of Governments, or RV COG. RV COG is a catalyst that does communication and coordination, planning, and takes action for projects in Southern Oregon, mostly Jackson and Josephine Counties, and they work with communities and partners on a variety of projects. They have a very strong natural resources program, and that applies for grants, they manage contracts, and they work with a lot of partners. So I would champion the efforts of RV COG and the Natural Resources Program within RV COG, and the work that they and their partners do. I would help them to find federal, state, and local funding for their projects, and generally increase awareness, and raise their profile of the projects that they're working on, especially that relate to fire recovery and restoration and a changing climate. And I would personally engage in public education campaigns to help support their activities. Thank you.
Mr. Densmore.
Thank you. During the pandemic, I was privileged to be part of a citizens group in the city of Medford to help revisit the vision statement for the city, decide where the city would like to be in the year 2040. I believe that that kind of envisioning effort across the county, including the issues of climate change, is something that we ought to facilitate. Right now, we have three communities, Medford, Talent, and Ashland, who've already taken leadership in this issue, and I think rather than think of the county officials as discreet and different from city officials, remember that we are really representing the same people. So how can we create visions in smaller communities, rural neighborhoods, larger communities, and have the county be a part of that creative process? And so I would urge that to be the first priority, because if we can get people together and talk about our common values and goals, I think we have a chance to put together solutions.
Question number two is on the topic of water and drought. Mr. Yeder, as climate change leads to high elevation snowpack reduction, decreasing summer precipitation, and increased evaporation, drought conditions become more severe. What should Congress do to address these problems?
Congress has to act immediately, once again, we're passing that 40th floor. We have to do everything to decarbonize and electrify and increase resilience. Some of that increased resilience will come in initiatives, like you see in the Three Sisters Water Irrigation District, in which they've enclosed water that was in canals into pipelines under pressure. They have reduced water evaporation from these canals since seepage into the ground by 40%, so they now have a lot more water available. It's under pressure, farmers may not have to have pumps running, you know, putting fossil fuels into the air 24/7 during the irrigation system, and it's available for fires and so on. It's that kind of local solutions that I will propose to introduce in Congress, and I have a paper coming out of on it later this week. With regard to snowpack and so on, increased protections from the River Democracy Act, protecting the 4,600 miles, rivers and streams are absolutely essential, that's got to be passed, and more of the same. Thank you.
Okay, and for our county Commissioner candidates, we'll start with Mr. Densmore. As climate change leads to high elevation snowpack reduction, decreasing summer precipitation, and increased evaporation, drought conditions become more severe. What should the Board of Commissioners do to address these problems?
Well, I think first of all, the Board needs to understand that we've already had a number of factors that have impacted our water resource, and especially, I think in this county, we've experienced a lot of illegal water use, and I think it's impacted not only the already difficult situation because of the lack of precipitation. And I think one of the things that's missing here, and has been missing for many years, is to really do a comprehensive study of the groundwater in Jackson County and see just exactly what kind of impact has been going on, because unless we understand where we're starting from, even important solutions like the Wise Project, that should be perhaps explored in part in priority areas with the irrigation districts, I think we need that baseline data to understand just exactly what fix we're in.
Question number three, Mr. Yeder. I'm sorry, I'm so sorry. Well, we have compounding years of extreme drought, and one thing we can do to stop the bleeding is to be much more aggressive in our enforcement against illegal marijuana grows of all sizes. What we're doing is not working, we need to go after all the illegal grows before they take the water. And I propose that we get tougher by using on-demand satellites to get flyover imagery to map all of the illegal, all of the grows, and then determine which ones are illegal and go after them, no matter what the size. They have to know that they're coming for you too, and that has to be followed with aggressive enforcement of the collection of bees. So agriculture uses approximately 85% of our water supply, and we need to bring in infrastructure money to modernize our irrigation delivery systems, while still considering how to support biodiversity and wildlife. Regarding water rights, there's a saying, "First in time, first in line." It doesn't mean that those with long-time water use get to use, they use more water, but it does mean that theirs is guaranteed first. So if my neighbor has a water right and I don't, then there's a good chance that their crop will succeed and mine will fail. But as far as urban water use goes, we now have a water rights agreement between partner cities, where they pool together their water rights, and so if one city needs more, say for example Ashland, then they can get more water by paying more. So we move to question number three, starting with Mr. Yeder, on the topic of transportation. Combustion of fossil fuels in our transportation system is among the largest contributors regionally to the climate crisis. What should Congress do to encourage a reduction in greenhouse gas emissions from this sector?
So once again, electrification of absolutely everything that we can, and decarbonization of the sources of that electricity. Subsidies for purchasing electric vehicles, not just for individuals, but for companies, for railroads, there are rail yards now that are ordering locomotives that are electric that will reduce the carbon footprint by about 400 tons per locomotive per year, that kind of thing. In addition to that, Douglas County, just up north of you, is purchasing at least one, maybe several, electric buses. The federal government is responsible to encourage all of that, and building transmission lines, and subsidizing alternative forms of energy, solar, wind, geothermal, wave, and so on, everything all at once, all the time.
So for the county Commissioner candidates, and we will start with Ms. Kraus this time. Combustion of fossil fuels in our transportation system is among the largest contributors regionally to the climate crisis. What should the Board of Commissioners do to encourage a reduction in these emissions on the part of county operations and the community as a whole?
When I toured the Roads Department in White City, I learned that Jackson County has a really impressively large fleet of vehicles. In all, they have over 500 vehicles, mostly at that site, but also at a few other sites. One thing county could do to reduce emissions is to begin converting this fleet to electric vehicles. The Roads Department has a very large complex in Fullson, which would lend itself well to installation of a large solar farm which could power those vehicles at that site. And county needs to put together a plan for converting to electric vehicles, and then to go after the federal and state funding to support that plan. And doing this, and communicating it to the public, would put county in a position to be a leader and a role model for renewable energy projects. And I, as Commissioner, could do public information campaigns to educate and make aware the importance of moving to renewable energy, and educate about incentives that might be able to help people to do so. For example, there's a $7,500 rebate for getting electric vehicle from the state, 7,500, up to $7,500 tax incentive, and then Ashland has an additional incentive on top of that, and I think that county should also start to offer those kinds of incentives.
Let me simplify my answer by saying Denise has outlined in an excellent way what the county could do to be an example with its own operations. I needn't repeat that. I think what I would like to focus on is that the county can work with municipalities, with the Rogue Valley Transportation District, and with individual folks in the community, as well as developers who are contemplating the siting of housing projects, so that we reduce vehicle miles traveled. And when we think about it, well, when I think about it, years ago when I got started, pollution control was all about what we used to call point sources, which is individual plants and the like, and we didn't really work very hard on area sources, that's us. So working on us and encouraging people to reduce by design and by activity the impact of our vehicle miles traveled, and have the county really focus on that would be an important thing.
Thank you. We'll move to question number four, concerning clean energy and conservation. Mr. Yeder, if our nation is to contribute our share to addressing the global climate crisis, we will need to reduce our use of fossil fuels. What congressional proposals would you offer or support to assist this transition?
So once again, in support of the elements of the Green New Deal, Build Back Better, Inflation Reduction Act, as they apply to building infrastructure and reducing pollution. In addition to that, what happens right now is there's about $6 trillion worth of subsidy to the fossil fuel companies, 8% of that is actually in direct subsidies, the rest is in externalized costs to all of us in terms of, say, our health, our breathing, and so on. Right now, fossil fuel companies are allowed to externalize those costs. I am wearing an anti-coal t-shirt right now, that got 20 years ago in a demonstration in Austin. Coal has been subsidized for more than a century in this country because they externalize their costs. Those costs have to be recognized, and in the price of the energy that they produce, that will drive all of us to renewable sources of power. I guess, yeah, everything all the time, we're falling past the 44, we have to pull the ripcord and do them all.
And for the county Commissioner candidates, we'll start with Mr. Densmore and then Ms. Kraus. If Jackson County residents are to contribute our share to addressing the global climate crisis, we will need to reduce our use of fossil fuels. What should the Commission do to encourage residents to move towards reducing greenhouse gas emissions?
I think the most important thing the Commission do is to set a good example, and I think that we can do that by engaging the community in a larger sense, in town halls, and looking for partnership in non-threatening places. and looking for partnership in non-threatening places for us to get together and over a meal talk about what the future looks like. And also, I think we need to, me being in my mid-70s, we need to engage the help of young people, because it's their world we're fighting for. It isn't about the experience I've had in public office. It's about the future of the country, and I think young people need to be involved more deeply in what the commission is doing. It shouldn't be just gray heads telling people what to do. It should be engaging those folks who have a real stake in the future. And I think that may change the conversation a bit.
We have to adapt to our drying climate. And agriculture in the Rogue Valley is going to change just because of limited water resources. What natural resources do we have, though? We have plenty of sunshine. So Lake County, Oregon, leads the state in renewable energy in Oregon, in their projects. They've transitioned from heavy farming and ranching to renewable energy in the form of large solar farms in the high desert. They recognize the reality of their changing climate and they adapt it. They've brought in millions of dollars which continue to flow. They've rebuilt their schools, their roads, and they've rebuilt their economy. They've brought in hundreds of jobs while creating tremendous amounts of natural, of renewable energy. By being creative and working together, there is no reason why Jackson County can't do something like this. Additionally, Jackson County should be a leader and a role model in how they manage their own properties. One way they might do this is to use solar power wherever possible, and another way would be converting to high-efficiency heat pumps in their buildings. I would promote public service announcements to educate the public about why it's so important to make these changes, the money that you can save by doing so, and the incentives that are available. Thank you. For question number five, will be on the topic of forests and wildfire. This will be for all candidates, same question. We live in a region that is fire-prone and fire-adapted and where the intensity and frequency of fires is expected to increase. As a result, urban wildfire has risen to a high priority concern among Jackson County residents. What proposals would you introduce, support, or oppose to address the wildfire problem? We'll start with Mr. Yutter, then Ms. Kraus, and then Mr. Densmore.
So that's exactly right. Fire is just as real as gravity, and we live right in this gravity well right now. As you say, the organisms have evolved with fire and for fire. Gary Clarin took Denise and Hogan and me for a walk in the woods some days back and showed us microenvironments where logging and forest management need to be scientifically-based and highly localized and regionalized. Went up to Table Rock, went through the, and went into the Ashland watershed as well. So I learned a lot there. What I would propose at the federal level is that every effort be made to subsidize, to pay for boots in the woods, doing the work in the woods, that is necessary for fuels reduction, for fire suppression when it has to happen, and also to subsidize the use of drones, which now, well, you know, short time, will have the ability to sit on the ground, charging from solar batteries up in the air and suppressing a fire when it's detected within just a few minutes. That kind of stuff is on the horizon, and that's what I would support.
So I would propose the development of a comprehensive strategic plan addressing wildfire with emphasis on prevention, on evacuation coordination, and on emergency preparedness. And this would involve working with other entities to install urban and forest cameras for early detection of fires and to have a plan for coordinated control of those cameras. It would include using drone reconnaissance to identify early detection of fires, which is already being used in the Ashland watershed, and supporting efforts to do prescribed burning to reduce the fuel load, and being an active player in the Bear Creek Restoration Initiative, and taking responsibility for maintenance of county lands along the Bear Creek Greenway. Now, this would involve working with other jurisdictions who also share the authority over the Bear Creek Greenway, and then also with other organizations such as the Watershed Council and the Freshwater Trust, who are doing some really good work with managing invasive species and restoring native vegetation and pollinator habitat, and also restoration of rare geneticists. And I would support, again, RV COG in going after money intended for climate change projects. And I would promote public awareness announcements on topics such as dealing with smoke from a public health perspective, or fire hardening in fire-adapted communities, or emergency preparedness and evacuation procedures. Thank you. Question number six. I'm so sorry.
That's okay. Again, just by positioning, Denise had a chance to outline a number of the things that I would hope that we would end up working collaboratively with on the Board of Commissioners when we're both elected. But I would like to focus a bit on relationships. I think what's important is that a number of the wildland interfaces are on the edge of urban areas. And I think it's very important for the Board of County Commissioners to understand that, once again, they represent the same people as the cities that have these urban interface problems. And I would focus on obtaining for maybe the first time some quality meetings between the county and the city in developing strategies to handle these urban interfaces. And that would be a priority emphasis for me.
All right. Question number six, concerning natural resources and wildlife, is again for all the candidates. It is recognized that federal, state, and county officials and other entities, private and public, need to work together to come to science-based solutions on fire and forest management. Please summarize your plan to make this happen with specific examples. And we'll have Mr. Yutter, then Mr. Densmore, and then Ms. Kraus.
So yes, I think the first thing for any legislator to understand is that he or she has to be present, that is, coordinate and talk with people, and to work with people in higher and lower authorities up and down the line to solve problems, to identify and solve problems. So that, for instance, it would be necessary for me to work with tribes, with farmers, with foresters, with the timber industry itself, and everyone who has an interest. And particularly with the tribes who have, I think, senior rights, both morally and legally, with regard to water and the wildlands. Most of all, to work with environmental groups who are into environmental, long-term stewardship of the land rather than exploitation. I feel that my opponent in this race is aligned with organizations like Timber Unity and other people that are merely exploitative. All of us need to be cooperative for a common future in which we can all thrive.
Then it was Mr. Densmore and then Ms. Kraus.
Well, one of the first things I would try to do is make a motion in the Board of County Commissioners to have the Board of County Commissioners rejoin the Association of Oregon Counties. Since the summer of this year, Jackson County became the only county in Oregon not to belong to the Association of Oregon Counties. And in so doing, they have crippled their ability to work effectively with both the state and federal government. Now, one could complain about the level of dues, which are only $25,000, which relatively, when you have a $290 million surplus, doesn't seem to be a big problem. But you also make sure when you are part of that organization that you already are banding together with other counties that have similar problems, as you are trying to make your case for additional resources if they're necessary. So, and this is not the first rodeo for this group, this is the second time that they have withdrawn from the Association of Oregon Counties. So I believe it starts by being a team player across the state, and I will work for that.
A few years back, I attended a public forum at Southern Oregon University, and it was on fire and forest management. I'm not sure who sponsored it, but the participants ranged from everybody from logging people to environmentalists and everybody in between. And I was impressed with the presentations and the unique perspectives that each person brought to the table. But they were all united with a common objective, and that was everybody wanted healthy forests and safer communities. And I was, I left that day encouraged about the willingness people had to work together, and I was hopeful about the work that was being done. And so we need to work with RV COG, as I said before, with the State Fire Marshal's Office, with the Oregon Department of Forestry, with Loma Cotsi, with the Fire Districts, Ashland Forest Resiliency, and with Indigenous Peoples, to develop a plan to implement forest management practices based on science. And we must acknowledge that much of our county is in an extreme fire risk category, and that is largely a consequence of our changing climate, along with fire suppression. So our forests here rely, naturally rely on fire. So the Indigenous people that were here before, they used controlled burns to manage our forests, manage their forests. And this is another opportunity for us to be proactive and to be preventive, and we need to change our relationship with fire. Thank you. All right, we come to our last SoCant team prepared question. It'll be different for both candidate groups. We'll start with Mr. Yutter. Water wars in the Lower Clamath Basin have been ongoing for years, with farmers and irrigators who insist they have water rights to grow their crops pitched against Native American tribes and conservationists who insist that water should be left in the Clamath River for salmon runs. What proposals would you introduce, support, or oppose to address the Clamath water problem?
Well, you're right. It's a war, and in a war, there's mostly destruction. It's a less-than-zero-sum game. So it's incumbent on all of us to have a truce declared. Now, the kinds of truces that can be declared are exemplified by the $26 million that our senators managed to get allocated to the Clamath Basin for water projects. That's the kind of thing that we need to do as part of solutions. We need to recognize who has rights and not just who has grabbed stuff, and to find solutions that work. I alluded earlier to a Three Sisters Irrigation District project, but it's actually a series of projects. They tried different areas where they replaced wasteful canals with pipes and water under pressure. Some of these things succeeded and some of them didn't. It is incumbent on the federal government to fund experiments, see what works, what doesn't, and exploit the opportunities that exist. If you can keep from wasting 40% of your water, and if you can provide water that will be under pressure so farmers don't have to have pumps running, and that same water is available for fire suppression, then you've got a win-win-win up and down the line, and the federal government needs to do that kind of winning. Thank you.
For our commission candidates, we'll start with Ms. Kraus and then Mr. Densmore. In 2021, the Jackson County Board of Commissioners approved Order Number 15721, dissolving the Natural Resources Advisory Committee. Please explain why you think this was or was not a good idea, and identify what you would do as commissioner to promote resident input on commission issues. Well, I think it was a bad idea to dissolve the Natural Resources Advisory Committee, but even worse, to disregard it in the first place. And as county commissioner, I will immediately reactivate the committee, the advisory committee. And to promote resident input and to on climate and environmental issues, I will work with the advisory committee and citizens' engagement to develop a Jackson County Climate Action Plan. Other counties have already done this, and other municipalities have done this, like Ashland, Medford, Talent, and Grants Pass. I will also engage the public by establishing county-community conversations on climate and wildfire and water. We can work together with Southern Oregon University and with Rogue Community College to come up with creative ideas about how county can address climate issues. And we can also build collaborations with major employers such as Asante or Providence Health Systems, Oregon Shakespeare Festival, and other large employers. And we can talk about climate discussions, including climate adapting, adaptation, preparation, or mitigation and reduction. There's a lot of community involvement that needs to happen.
Thank you. I feel a little bit by my positioning. Me too. But I think I would like to step out a little bit more and reinforce what I said earlier. If we do not have a vision of what we'd like this county to be like, and what we want it to be, whether we're talking climate strategy or economic development, or workforce development, there are so many things that three county commissioners could not know by themselves. And of necessity, we need to be working with people in the private sector, in the nonprofit sector, in the faith community, everywhere we can find good ideas. So the idea of, if you don't like the advice, you fire the committee, doesn't seem to be the right approach.
All right, that concludes the SoCant team questions, and now we will turn to audience questions that you submitted as we entered, some of you. These have been vetted by the team members to avoid duplication and to assure clarity. Each candidate will have one minute to answer each of the questions. Number one. Our communities fought so hard to defeat Jordan Cove LNG. Now fossil fuel companies are trying a new strategy to expand already existing pipelines. Would you use your position to oppose projects like the current GTN or Gas Transmission Northwest Express proposal in the Northwest that expand fossil fuel infrastructure? We will start with Mr. Yutter, Ms. Kraus, Mr. Densmore.
I don't know about that pipeline, and I'm already against it. I would not vote to expand use of fossil fuels. I recognize that we're going to continue to use fossil fuels for a short time. We have to make it as short as possible. We cannot subsidize it, we cannot urge it. We have to Build Back Better. We have to build the infrastructure for alternative energy, transmission, electrification, and a green world. I'm beginning.
So I don't know about that pipeline either, but I do know that I was involved in the LNG battle against LNG. And I, as far as county commissioner goes and authority that they would have, I would definitely... I would definitely use my position, if I had that authority, to be against the expansion of any kind of pipelines that would continue this problem with fossil fuels. I think our emphasis and our efforts need to be put in renewable energy, like I was talking about earlier, and so I would be very much opposed to expansion.
I'm glad that I also am not familiar with the proposal. And in terms of the county's role in this, I think it would only likely be if there was a pipeline that would impact, you know, the folks at Jackson County and property owners within it. So, I would, again, want to know more about the project proposal, how it would work. But again, I think our priority is to move away from fossil fuels.
Question number two. Drought is a serious and ongoing problem. Do you think housing development projects should be evaluated in terms of water use and what can be done to address the problem of agricultural activities, pires, and wine that are threatened? We'll start with Mr. Yeder, then Mr. Densmore, and then Ms. Crowe.
So, with regard to housing and water, it's important for us at a federal level to make sure that we encourage smart infrastructure. The hard-built landscape lasts for tens, hundreds of years. If we build it long, we will continue to use more energy and more water. So, things like green roofs, so that you don't have yards that, lawns that demand a lot of water, and that counties are encouraged to allow gray water use, and that the federal government subsidizes water treatment facilities so that water is not wasted. Right now, as a nation, we waste a huge amount of water in old pipelines in cities. With regard to water in the orchards, for instance, there are smarter ways to do it. Technology is there with drip, and I'm stopping now. What?
Given the nature of Oregon's land use law, I think we would be talking about pretty unusual development that the county would be involved in with regard to rural housing. Perhaps there may be some instances where we might think it's a good idea, perhaps, to cite some housing, workforce housing, near wineries, near agricultural developments. But if we would do that, I think we'd have to be wise stewards of the resource as well.
Well, I think this is a complex problem, and it is really an important issue. While we need to build more affordable housing, we also need to protect our water resources. And we, we really have to take a big look, and this is why we want to do a comprehensive strategic plan of our water use now and in the future, and what can we sustain? And as we do this planning, we really need to think about building differently. We have a changing climate. We all know this. We need to not build the same way we've always built. We need to build smarter. And we, other people are already doing this, you know? And when we talk about how we can build fire-hardened homes, but also to be much more conservation-minded in how we use water and be creative with using gray water, there's so much gray water that we can use in. San Diego is an example of a place that doesn't have... Thank. Safe pipeline.
Question number three. What can be done to encourage federal and state forest managers to address fire risk in these public lands? We will have Mr. Yeder, then Ms. Crowe, and then Mr. Densmore.
Sorry, did you repeat that question?
Yeah. What can be done to encourage federal and state forest managers to address fire risk in these public lands?
I'm glad you asked to have the question repeated. Thank you. So, as I said before, it is important to be present and to be interactive with folks. I think right now, there is a disconnect between fire management at state and federal levels, and people are working at odds with one another. It's probably most likely a problem of funding because it's the golden rule of Q has the gold rules, and the federal government has a responsibility for fire control in its forests, which obviously can spread elsewhere. We also have to understand that fire is natural and has to be used judiciously in a controlled fashion in areas like this. People get paid to do it right. All needs to be science-based. I don't have a simple answer to your question. Sorry.
Yeah, then it's Ms. Crowe, and then Mr. Densmore.
I watched a meeting that, where they got in a lot of different players on this problem. So, we had, I think it was state, well, there was definitely state. There were fire districts. There were county fire districts. The, I think it was the Fire Marshal, a lot of different people at the table. And what we noticed, there's a lot of really good things happening in each of these areas, but there's a lot of overlap, and there's also a lot of gaps. And I think that's why it's going to be so important to have like a comprehensive plan, where we're all at the table, everybody's at the table, to look at what we're doing, to have good communication, to be able to coordinate activities. And I can use an example of what I brought up earlier about the cameras that they use to, to look at the forest and to look, also composition, to look at urban areas, to do early detection of fires and smoke. Well, we have some of those cameras. We need a lot more. But we have a problem too, because nobody, we can't decide who operates the camera in case of emergency, and so that's when it could break down, and we can't let that happen.
One of the things I've learned in my public life is it's still all about relationships. And I think insofar as trying to work more effectively with the federal officials who are, in this, in this case that we're talking about, I go back to my point about the Association of Oregon Counties, the National Association of Counties. They can be our allies in telling our story as it applies to the lands, the federal lands that we live near. Oregon is one of those states, and aren't remaining, that have a good share of this land is owned by the federal government. So, it's a case of how do we effectively build the relationships that allow us to collegially manage these lands?
Question number four. What can be done to promote renewable energy? Renewable energy use in Jackson County for the nation?
Once again, it's money, money, money. You have to make renewable energy cheaper than the fossil fuel energy. You do that in a couple of ways. You make the fossil fuel companies recognize the actual cost, and that cost gets passed along to the consumer, like I said before. So, there's not this subsidization. And for a while, you're going to have to subsidize solar, wind, geothermal, and wave for a while. But at the consumer level, you have to make it cheap and attractive. You've got to make it available. You've got to have the charging stations along the highway. That's going to have to be paid for, and it can be paid for. You're going to have to have people go into those vehicles, and they need to subsidies for a while. It will take a while for us to transition to where it's actually a whole bunch cheaper all the time. But right now, we can produce geothermal energy for a thousand. Oh, okay.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Then we'll have Mr. Densmore, and then Ms. Crowe.
Not long ago, I was given the privilege of having a meeting with our new president at SOU, Mr. Bailey, and he had some exciting new ideas about how to use alternative energy and incorporate Ashland in his planning, as well as the university. I think the county needs to be an active participant in that project. I was also, as I was thinking about my opportunities in the past, I was on the city council when we decided to move to solar energy to operate our sewage treatment plant. And that was a very much a positive, sort of a leading-edge kind of thing in those days. And I would be pleased to be a part of more leading-edge things.
Well, I think that what Lake County is doing is pretty leading-edge, and I think that's really impressive. It's not only, it's not a cheaper solution. It was a, it's a real moneymaker. I mean, it has totally turned their whole community around. And county has a lot of land. It has a lot of sun exposure. And I don't, I haven't investigated this deeply, but if you think about just the airport and all that land that is not used, it's close to the electrical system that it would need to hook up to, could that be a place? Before, I think it was about, it was reflective, solar panels, so that might not work. We've gotten past that now, so that may be back on the table. We could use some of that land to build these solar farms. It could really bring in more revenue for the county and bring in renewable energy for everybody. And also, I've seen some really neat things what they're doing in California, where the irrigation canals that are exposed, because you might not be able to pipe absolutely everything, they can put solar panels over the canals to help shade and cut down evaporation and also produce energy. Thank you.
Question six, we have two more. Are there any ways to promote the affordability of electric vehicles? We'll start with Ms. Yeder, then Ms. Crowe, and then Mr. Densmore.
So, well, sure, and it's money. It's the subsidy. It's the $7,500 tax credit, which is a refundable tax credit now, so that, you know, what we need to do is make sure that it isn't just, you know, rich people buying hundred, $100,000 tablets that get subsidized, but people who may be wanting to buy a $30,000 vehicle or a $25,000 vehicle, or a used $8,000 vehicle, or something like that. And having the infrastructure there so that they can plug them in at night, because a lot of the folks that might be looking for the lower-end vehicles may not have a freestanding house where they can set a car next door and charge it. And federal government needs to buy vehicles and induce that demand so, and with mass production, the prices will come down and down and down.
Yeah, I know that not everybody can afford to buy a $50,000 truck, and we don't want this to be something that's only available to those who can afford it and everybody who needs it can't get it. So, I think that we're going to be seeing more incentives coming from the federal government. We're seeing some already. I think we'll see some from the state. And what I, I like the fact that Ashland has even tapped on to that. Ashland has an incentive for that, also for chargers. And I think, you know, county never does this. You know, Ashland and Medford, they often have these kinds of incentives for water efficiency or energy efficiency, or even the charging and the electrical vehicles. County, I've never seen that. I live one house outside of the urban growth boundary, so I live in county. I'm incorporated to Jackson County. So, a lot of those, I see all of those incentives. They don't apply to me. I'd like to see that extended to the county.
I think sometimes you have to stay in your lane. And I think in this case, I would be inclined to support those efforts at the state and federal level. But I think it's something that I believe Denise and I are going to have our hands full, taking care of those issues in terms of the county as they apply to this area. So, I think I would respectfully pass on this one.
Our region has seen a rise in far-right and eco-fascist rhetoric that blames the most vulnerable and poorest in our community for fire issues and environmental degradation. How would you center the most impacted by climate change in the solutions and policy decisions around mitigating fire risk? And we will have Mr. Yeder, then Mr. Densmore, and then Ms. Crowe.
So, yeah, I was told by somebody who was getting contracted to come out and remove some blackberries for me, that we left this, we're out in the woods deliberately starting fires. So, that is a, what do I want to say? A conspiracy theory that is illustrative of what you're talking about, right-wing activism blaming the wrong people, blaming some people for actually deliberately starting fires. I can't re-educate some of the folks that believe that kind of stuff. But what I can do is make sure that the mitigation efforts that we have do provide jobs and justice for the people that need jobs and who have suffered from injustice in the past. That's hiring people, training people, and putting them to work, doing the things that we all need done.
I think it would be important for us as a community to make sure that we hear from all of the people who are users of the public lands, whether they are users of necessity or not. And we certainly weigh that in terms of policymaking. That doesn't excuse criminal behavior, and I do think that we have to focus occasionally on what enforcement issues that need to be done as well. Not long ago, I had the occasion to ride the Greenway with Steve Lambert, and one of the things that I observed as we were driving down the Greenway was someone standing by the Greenway lighting a cigarette. So, and we stopped because we needed to make sure that we took corrective action in that moment. So, again, one size doesn't fit all in terms of a solution, but we need to listen to people who are there.
So, I also got to take that tour with Steve Lambert and drive down the Greenway. And also, when we were passing under a bridge, there was a person that was having a fire in the daytime to cook some food, and the livability team was coming out and was checking on that. I know that, you know, the rhetoric, you just can't get lost on that. What I want to focus on is the fact that we need to really work on homelessness. We need to address homelessness, and I think that the county commissioners can do a lot more about homelessness than what they've been doing. And we can't just talk about homelessness in an isolated fashion. We have to talk about, we have to wrap that all together with addressing affordable housing, addressing mental health and addiction. And we can come up with a plan that we can start to figure out how are we going to really meet the needs of these people? And it's going to help everybody in so many different ways. When I went around Medford...
We do have a little bit more time, and so we're going to, we're going to go ahead with a few more of the audience questions. Jackson County seems to run a handsome surplus in good times and bad, in times of trouble. It makes sense to use these funds. Can this help with climate issues? And that would be for the county commissioner. So, why don't we do Ms. Crowe, and then Mr. Densmore?
The answer that I would say to that is absolutely. So, I want to point to the fact that, you know, if we have this, we can call this a rainy day fund. And when we had the Alameda Fire, if you don't call that a rainy day, then what is a rainy day? During the Alameda Fire, we got, county got a lot of money from the state and federal to do recovery. And county actually made money from the Alameda Fire. And they didn't really pay much out, but they brought a lot in. So, also, as far as addressing homelessness, this is like, and the other issues that are interrelated to that, I think that, you know, we had an opportunity to have a million dollars in homelessness in February of '22, and county did not take that money. And the reason why, part of the reason why, might be because once you took the money, then you also needed to have a sustainable plan. And that would require, that would require money out of the county budget. We need to be able... We need to be able to use that money for those kinds of programs. Thank you.
We all want clean... Oh, I'm sorry.
One of the reasons why the county, besides being good, pretty good fiscal stewards, is that we folks in Jackson County agreed to take over the library system and decided to tax ourselves and save the county about $6 million a year when we chose to do that. So one reason why county coffers have been building is that those expenditures haven't been, had to be made. So when we look at the $209 million surplus and you look at the options, the most important conversation that should be taking place right now is with the county commissioners asking the community in full transparency, this money is available. We believe that this amount should be reserved for the rainy day. These are potential funds that would be available. What do you think is the highest investments of these funds?
We all want clean air, water, and oceans. Electric cars are a step forward. However, no one speaks of the adverse ramifications of developing electric cars. Can you explain your understanding of how elements necessary for building these cars are mined and where? How are batteries from electric cars disposed of? Do you feel good about the dependency upon China and other countries to provide what we need to accomplish the monumental task at hand? And let's do Mr. Yetter, followed by Mr. Denzmore, and then Ms. Kraus.
So last question answered first. Yeah, I'm really uncomfortable sourcing materials that are critical for our survival as a nation and a planet to other unreliable folks. We have lithium in this country. Most of it is coming from China now. Then some comes from South America. And there are opportunities to get it here and from the ocean. There's an endless supply available from the ocean. Right now, it costs maybe five times as much as it needs to from, from the ocean. So, but that is a technological solution that we have. The other thing is, is that electric vehicles don't have to be so frigging big. A much smaller vehicle will take a much, much, much smaller battery. Local travel can be done by bicycle and scooter and stuff for folks, even older folks, and certainly for young people. It can be much more economical. Right now, hybrid cars in the smaller versions are... I'm done.
I also am troubled by those related issues with regard to the electric vehicles. But our country is, seems to be of a national policy mind that this is important for the saving of the climate. And as long as that's our policy, I don't think as a local government official that I would be inclined to, again, invest a lot of time in this particular nuance of the issue.
So, yeah, I guess that's not really in the jurisdiction of the county commissioner. But I personally do have concerns about that as well. It seems like oftentimes when we come up with something that we think is the next great thing, we don't think it all the way through about the unintended consequences. And I am troubled about how we will dispose of all those batteries. And I just hope that the, and also the mining of places. I mean, I can't remember where it was. It was a pristine environment. These people have been there generations and generations. And the western countries are going to come in and just ruin their way of life and destroy their environment. And I, I don't, I don't like that so much. I think that, I hope that the technology hurries and that we, we can be a little bit more sensitive to the potential unintended consequences.
Okay, and this will be our last question. It will be just for the county commissioner candidates. I'm like Denise. I worry about the bees and the birds, et cetera. This indicates the use of chemicals such as Roundup. The county commissioners might demand the immediate ending to the spraying. They might also find ways to encourage cities and commercial entities to allow some weeds in their lawns. Golf courses? And we'll do Ms. Kraus first and then Mr. Denzmore.
Well, I really don't like Roundup. I've already gotten that out of my life. I would like to, I like to work with the people who know the experts in the field about some better, better ways to handle this. I personally have a little organic farm. I have the no spray zone. I try to manage things organically. It's a little bit harder sometimes, but I think overall it's way worth it. As far as county, I was worried when we were driving up the greenway that I don't want to see them just trying to keep the weeds down, weed abatement, using chemicals. That's a concern. And also along the roadways, you see, you can tell where it's been sprayed. You know, I think this is Oregon. I think we should do better than that. And I would like to, as county commissioner, work with people that, you know, non-toxic southern Oregon, pollinator projects, people like this who know more, some better options. And I would be very open to hearing about that and then making that work for county.
I share Denise's concern. I think my emphasis would be to try to work with, particularly our legislative delegation, to understand exactly what does the law provide? Because in many instances, the county is acting as an agent of the state. And we are, our hands are more or less tied unless there is some flexibility for us to make rules and regulations in this particular area. Again, it's worth studying. It's worth examining in a careful way.
May I? So, so, yeah. I'm particularly concerned about Roundup. Yes, LeFasse. I'm also concerned about the neonicotinoids. They're the ones that are going to kill the bees. This is a federal problem because the federal government is to some degree under control of Big Pharma, the baiters of the world. That has to end. When I'm in Congress, it will.
We are now ready for the candidates to give us their closing remarks. And each candidate will have two minutes. We'll start with Mr. Yetter, followed by Mr. Denzmore, and then Ms. Kraus.
So, I am a pragmatist. Nothing can be more pragmatic than surviving. We are facing an existential crisis, as was started beginning. I recognize that. I am running for Congress because I recognize that and I want to do something about it. I am for all kinds of pragmatic solutions that can be instituted from the federal level, from decarbonization and electrification and building, building of infrastructure and so on. And just as a tiny teaser, and I alluded to it earlier, some of that kinds of infrastructure can come into operation right here at home where we can save a ton of water and provide farmers a great benefit and provide tighter suppression. And what I want to do is institute every pragmatic solution that I can find to solve our existential crisis and achieve a very pragmatic end of living. Thank you.
Thank you. I have had the opportunity and honor to serve in many public positions over the last 50 years. One reason why I chose to go back in public life is I feel like there's been excessive amounts of partisan shift and not proper amount of practical problem solving. And that's why I'm running as an independent, to see if we can't move to a model of county governments that includes a nonpartisan election for the county commissioners and enfranchising the almost 60,000 people who don't participate in our primaries. And I think that's an important thing. I think also, many hands make for lighter work. There should be five commissioners, not three. Because right now, the three commissioners are collectively responsible, but none are accountable. And I think having five commissioners elected by discrete districts would mean wherever you live in the county, there is somebody you can talk to about a problem. Whether it's a illegal marijuana on a road, trash on the highway, or just a park that's not being taken care of. And that's why I think that's a real important thing for us to do and for the future to be better.
Well, I truly believe that we should leave a place better than we found it. And we have a lot of work to do to get there. But we owe it to ourselves and to our kids and to our, to our futures. So I care about people and I care about this planet. And I want to do my part. And I am not afraid to work hard. In fact, I thrive on hard work if it's something that I really believe in and that I feel like I can make a difference. Well, I really believe in climate action. And nowhere can we do this better than at the local level. So I know that I have a lot to learn and I'm anxious about learning more. And I really look forward to working with you all. And I want to tell you that my tagline from our campaign is common ground, common sense, and creating solutions together. And we already have common ground. We care about our world and we care about our futures. And we have common sense and we have a pretty good idea about what we know needs to be done and we're ready to get to it. And as far as creating solutions together, let's keep coming up, come up with more innovative ways to get this work moving together. And let's move this forward and do it at the county level. So we are in a final sprint of this election. And I would, you know, there's so much work to be done. And so I can't miss an opportunity to say that if you aren't already, if you want to get involved and be a volunteer, we really could use you, just even a couple of hours can help a lot. So when your ballot drops in just over two weeks, please, I hope that you will consider voting for me. And let's get to this.
Well, that concludes the candidate response component of our forum. And before handing the microphone back to Alan, I'd like to pause so that we can finally offer the candidates a round of applause both for seeking the nomination to serve us in this conference. And attending the forum, thank you.